This is a public hearing. Today's date is October thirteenth, 2015. Roll call, please.
General.
Here.
Here.
Rock.
Here.
Three present.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize a few dignitaries here in our audience. Superintendent, Police Superintendent Chief Taylor is here. Newly appointed Police Chief Jeff Winwood. Jeff, congratulations. Glad you're here. Fire Chief, I'm sorry. Thank you. Health Department Director Joanne Keegan is on hand, as well as Representatives from Trinity Ambulance, John Chumley and Mr. Kelly are here as well. Very valuable insight. As well as Counselor Melonazo is on hand today. So today's agenda is stemming from a Lowell Sun article back in September regarding Lowell ranking sixth in the Commonwealth in opiate overdoses. You know, we had a report, and the Lowell Sun's journalism has been top-notch on this, just to add, but May, in the late spring, we sort of had an encouraging report that the opiate was seen to be leveling or evening out, so to speak. But that soon changed later in the summer when we got another conflicting report that overdoses certainly did go up. And even to add to that, we have a most recent report by Joanne Keegan and Trinity Ambulance and several other City of Lowell employees that is, that just come out last week, that is less than encouraging and states quite clearly that this issue is going to get worse before it gets better. So with that being said, I'd like to direct it to Health Department Director Joanne Keegan to basically break down this report, if she could, to us all and to the folks at home, please. Madam Keegan, you have the floor.
So before you, you have the two different reports. One is the monthly report of overdoses for the month of September. And as you can see on the bottom of the first page, it compares overdoses over the last several monthly reports. And unfortunately, September of 2015, we had 119 total overdoses, which was the highest number we've had since we've, since Trinity has been nice enough to track all of these numbers. So, yes, discouraging. And then the second page of the report looks at just opiates, overdoses by opiates. And so, so total overdoses is about four a day. Opiate-specific overdoses is 69 for the month of September, or about two a day. The breakdown is generally 60-40 in terms of male, female. They take a look at the day of the month, hour of the day. There's, there's a lot of information. There's neighborhood information. The thing to remember is that these are folks that overdosed in Lowell. Many of them are not Lowell residents. Some of them are Lowell residents. The section of the city is not residents specifically, but where the overdose occurred. And then you have before you a nine-month summary of specifically opiate overdoses in the city. And, you know, there's 550 for the three months. As you can see, it breaks down the specific, it's just opiates, not other drugs. And on the second page of that report, there's a breakdown of, so looking at the total number of opiate overdoses over the last nine months that occurred in Lowell, folks that overdosed came from 37 different communities. And that is delineated further in a map that should be in your packet that looks at where those towns are, that folks that overdosed in Lowell named as their home residents. And then it looks at the location of the patient, whether it be a private home, a public facility, either inside or outside. In the month of September, the majority occurred in private homes. And then it looks at Narcan usage. Fortunately, we have Narcan available. We probably, over the course of the year, will have administered about 500 doses of Narcan for the whole year. This looks at month by month and who administers it, with, of course, Trinity administering a large part, but also the Fire Department, the Police Department, the ALS Service, and other non-healthcare providers, possibly family members. And so, I'm not sure if any has a specific question for John or I, or?
Yeah, I have a quick question. Now, can you just explain, on the first page, you have 119 overdoses in September. Now, and on the following page, it goes down to 69. Are you separating opiates from?
Right, so, right, so it's 119 total overdoses, but 69 could be, according to the patient record, directly attributed to an opiate.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Or an opioid, would you say, also? So synthetic opiates, or?
There's a list, there's a list of about six or seven. So we look for fentanyl.
Yeah.
So opiates are things like morphine and things that come from the poppy plant, as you know, but there are also synthetic opioids, things like heroin and fentanyl, that would be included in the opiate report of 69.
Okay. And just one more point I'd like to make is that, thank you for pointing it out, where these individuals are coming from. I know we're a city, and it's nice that you listed that. I mean, we're not here to differentiate, obviously. We're here to help everybody that's in our city, but it goes to show you that not all of these people are from Lowell, they're from many, many, from affluent communities. And it shows, just verifies that what a problem this is, that for all, no matter rich, poor, no matter the demographics, everybody is involved with this issue. So I do appreciate you pointing that out. Counselor Mercy, do you have anything?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. What is very reassuring, to some degree, is the fact that 119 people that overdosed could have actually died, and yet with this Narcan, their life has been saved. But there are people that slip through the cracks and still die. We still hear of opioid death. And the thing that's most troubling to me is, it seems to get worse in that these people have families, so it isn't just, oh, this poor person had an overdose, or this poor person on drugs died. It's this poor person had a family that is now suffering with the death of their loved one, and yet you read how it gets worse, where the clinical counseling facilities close up, and they, they, they don't have the help anymore. So now they're probably going to be a statistic where they're probably going to drink because of it, and drink themselves to death in sorrow for have lost their loved ones. So it's just a chain reaction, so that 119 people's lives were saved, but then there's tragedy in some that die, and their families can't be clinically helped through these counseling centers. One just recently closed up with Ken Powers, and you read that in the paper. And I see the sadness there, because these people, the guy just lost his son, he went for counseling, and he can't go anymore. So it's just a vicious cycle that takes place, and it's, I wish that we could never have to meet like this, to discuss this very sad epidemic that is hitting this country. I don't know why it's happening. I just don't know. I recently had a knee replaced, and I was on an opioid, and I was petrified of it, because I was thinking, maybe I might be addicted to it, to the point where I was supposed to keep on top of the pain, and I was afraid of it, so I would let it go for eight hours instead of four, or as needed. And it did more harm to me than good, but I couldn't, I couldn't take that chance.
Right.
So it's really sad.
And so, just a point of clarification about the 119 folks. So we don't have numbers on how many of those folks survived or died, because this report, Trinity's report, doesn't follow through on that specific information. So some of those folks, the presumption is, were, had fatal overdoses, but many of them had the benefit of emergency response and Narcan.
Well, we could have had 119 that died.
Absolutely.
And we didn't, so that's a good thing. But I wonder how many of the 119, you know, tried to turn their life around. That's why when I see places like Megan's House, it's remarkable to think that someone privately is doing something about it, that I need to hear more about more Megan Houses in the city. We would welcome that, because people need help, and that's my comments.
Right, and the impact, obviously, like you said, is spouses and children.
Yes.
And grandchildren, and neighbors, and, you know, it's extensive in terms of that.
I know, I know. Thank you, Joanne.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rock?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for the report. A quick question. Does this report include Trinity, Fire, and Police combined?
I believe it does. So all the data is from the Trinity PCI. So if you're looking at the Narcan usage, and it says Lowell Police is two, that's just two times that our crews documented LPD. They may have used it four, five, six, 10, but it's the times that our crews documented in our paperwork.
Okay, so Chief Winwood, on this, so the Fire Department, I know, goes out, probably does this a couple of times per shift, the Narcan. Are there separate numbers, other than this, of how many times the Fire Department goes out to do an overdose?
Yes, Counselor. Our numbers are slightly lower than Trinity's. We all respond to the same medical emergencies, and we all try to get to them as soon as possible and get them the Narcan and the oxygen that they need. However, sometimes when Trinity gets to the call first, they'll wave us off, and our guys won't know what the, what the problem is. It could be a man or a woman down. So their numbers tend to be a little bit higher, but I think the most accurate numbers are the ones Trinity has, because we're all responding to those, to those medical emergencies, and I think Trinity's are the most accurate.
Yeah, I guess there's a question, I guess, for either John or for the chief. What happens after the Narcan is administered? Is that person taken, is it, do they have to go to the hospital for follow-up? Is there a procedure that follows up afterwards?
Yes, it is important for the, for the victim to go to the hospital. And another important thing is, is giving the victim rescue breaths. We're trying to get oxygen into the people, because the opiates slow down their breathing quite a bit. And by giving them oxygen, hitting them with the Narcan, and then sending them off to the hospital, it's going to benefit the patient, because the Narcan will wear off after, you know, an hour or so, and they may need another dose, or they may need to be checked out by a physician in the hospital.
And John, so when Trinity gets there first, and they administer the Narcan, is that, is the patient taken to the hospital?
Many times, yes. Matter of fact, most of the time, they are. But there are times, Counselor, when they, they feel good enough to get up, and they take off, and we don't see them. Now, that's not a lot of times, but it does happen, and unfortunately, two or three hours later, we're back picking that same person up again. It's a miracle drug, but it does have its negative side effects in that regard.
Thank you. Thanks, Chairman.
Thank you. That's a good question, Counselor. Stemming from that, Governor Baker is going to be asking the legislative to amend his, his recent task force report, to give doctors the ability to hold overdose patients for a period of three days, if they, if they see fit. Right now, John, like you said, they're free to just walk right out. In many cases, it's the same individual, twice, three times, even four times in one day. And that will give the doctors, where they go from there, that's, that's a good question, but if it does pass legislature, it will give doctors the authority to hold a patient for a number of days till they see fit, so, yes. John?
As well, Madam Mayor, you mentioned about Megan's House, and the open house last week, there was about 800 people that attended, so we know how important it is. I'm not sure how many beds that holds, you might know more than I do.
Fifteen, fifteen from the start.
And they're working on to get 20.
Okay. Just for your information, we are attending a open house, a ribbon-cutting, this coming Friday morning in Haverhill, for a facility that's probably twice that size. It's called Serenity House, and it's exactly the same thing. Unfortunately, it's another privately owned, privately funded, insurance does not cover it. It's a privately funded addiction hospital for those who need it. And that's probably, I think, 31 beds, I heard. So right there is, you know, 50 beds that are opening up within a 15-mile radius of Lowell, but we could use five times that. And unfortunately, Corey, as you mentioned, there is no, there's no money. Our state doesn't have the money to open up and/or, you know, pay for these new facilities, so they have to be privately funded. We wish there was. I mean, Tuxbury Hospital would be a great site. We've talked about that for years. Would be a great site for a situation like that. Unfortunately, they have to be privately funded right now.
And the Governor's initiative on, on holding folks for three days would be great, if we could get folks to stay until we could find placement, but I'm guessing that the insurance companies are going to have some issues with that, and I hope that it gets through, and I hope that they, you know, encourage the insurance companies to pay for those stays, because, you know, they just really need to be somewhere until they can get into a treatment program.
I agree. Chief Taylor, please.
Thank you, Counselor. You know, I have some additional statistical information, and it's not very optimistic. As they indicated from the Trinity report, which is the most comprehensive report for the overall perspective on the treatment of the overdoses, two a day is, is pretty much accurate in terms of our analysis, too, opiate overdoses only. Tragically, though, tragically, we've had 42 deaths from opiate overdoses so far this year. That's just opiate overdoses, just in the City of Lowell, and just in the last weekend, we, we were at 39 when I originally had this report compiled, and it had to be updated today with three additional ones, so we're up to 42. So, you know, very tragically, it's, on average, two opiate overdoses per day, and on average, one fatality per week, on average, so.
Yep. Thank you, Chief. That, I mean, that seals it, this.
And that number will probably go up, because what happens, it's pending toxicology, which takes a protracted period of time to get the final results. So what you will typically see is sometime in the spring, when we get the year-end numbers for 2015, it'll certainly be higher than 42, so.
Yes.
The other thing I'll add is that my officers have seen in the field, because of the strength of this heroin/fentanyl mix, that many times they're having to use two doses of the nasal Narcan or more to try and revive patients. And because of that combination, the fentanyl is much stronger, much more potent than the typical heroin, and unfortunately, for the people that are using opiates, heroin, especially in the community, they have no idea to know what the strength is, the combination of the fentanyl. Sometimes it's pure fentanyl, which is up to 50 to 100 times more powerful than, than heroin. And it's so, it's so powerful that it's very dangerous for any of the first responders to get it on their, on their skin, to come in contact with it, this fentanyl, because it, it can actually, you know, you know, contaminate and lead to difficulty for the first responders. So it's a very complex, very sad story. We continue to struggle with it. September, as you've indicated, was no better, and tragically, it was, in many cases, worse. And we continue to work on this, and, you know, we're trying to address it from multitude of different issues. It requires treatment, as my counterparts have indicated, and then if you talk to people involved in substance abuse treatment, it requires follow-up and, and many, many weeks and months of follow-up care to try and successfully help these individuals, so.
Thank you, Chief. And stemming from the report, we've got some high numbers, particularly from downtown in the acre. It seemed to have a higher percentage. What do you attribute this to?
Well, I think it, I would attribute it to the, some of the population that's downtown, and there's a, there's a concentration, so to speak, of service providers down there that provide various services to help individuals with some of these issues, and that may account for it, some of the housing mix down there, too. And I, what I will say is, I've had people ask me, and previously, so Chief, you know, where does this happen? Does it happen in the spots that we would expect it to happen? And the answer is, yes, it does, and it also happens where we don't expect it to happen. It happens in neighborhoods all across the city and the state, so it's not easily defined and categorized in just those neighborhoods. It's really impacted almost everybody now. Everybody, family member, or coworker, or somebody we know, has, unfortunately, had somebody that's struggling with this issue.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Just one other point, sorry.
Joanne?
So this subcommittee meeting was in reference to the Lowell Sun article about ranking of Lowell as number six. And in that report, they're giving you numbers from 2014 in terms of fatality. As the chief said, the 2015 fatality number won't be available until the spring, and he's already given you numbers that are significantly higher than 29 deaths for the 2014 figures. So I think when you see the 2015 figures.
Yes, and the 2014 figures were less than a handful of being three or four at the same time. So alarmingly, I'm sure, these other gateway cities in the Commonwealth are struggling just as hard as we are really. Counselor Mercy?
Thank you. Are we making any headway in the school system to educate our youth of the dangers here? Do we know any drug addicts that were reformed, that can give a speech, that have been there and back? We could go into the school system and talk. It would mean absolutely nothing, but if you have a story from someone that actually lived it, and you frighten these kids, I mean, I'm sorry to do that, but if it would save their life, I would go in the school system and frighten the daylights out of them, because we need people that have experienced this, and, I mean, that would make an impression on me if I was a kid.
Well, you, many of us were at the Lowell House breakfast that was held about a month ago, and I still remember the story the Governor told about being in the campaign trail in Lowell, left Lowell, he got a phone call about his son, who had a sports-related injury, and the first thing he thought of was, don't, he called him and said, don't take the opiates.
Right, that's right.
He was terrified because of all the stories he had heard, and then, you know, I personally would share those concerns with a family member, you know? So you're absolutely right. I think that the insidious nature of this, and I don't pretend to be an expert, obviously, but the insidious nature of this addiction is so difficult and so challenging, and so difficult to, to, you know, eventually recover from. I think you're right. I think we have to absolutely educate everybody at very early ages about this issue.
I'm not kidding. Now, how many of us have children, and we tell our children, don't do this, don't do that, and they don't really listen to us, but then they'll come home and say, guess what teacher so-and-so said, or the, or the guy down the street? They can hear it from them, and I've been saying the same thing, and they don't hear that. That's why I say it is important to have people go into the school system that actually have experienced it, because you can tell your children, don't do drugs, this or that, but if they hear it from someone else, it makes a better impression on them. They think we're all funny daddies or something. I don't know what it is.
Corey?
One, one thing we're trying to do on the Fire Department is, we have two public education officers that talk to our children about fire safety, and we're trying to work with the School Department to teach our young children about the dangers of these terrible drugs and to stay away from them. And a lot of the children look up to the firefighters, and they'll listen to them, and these guys have had experience out in the field dealing with these overdoses for many years.
There you go, yes.
And hopefully, we can make a little bit of an impact with our children in the city.
That's good.
So one other thing that the Health Department has been working on with the School Department, we've been meeting to start an educational program for all fourth graders in the Lowell Public Schools. There's 49 fourth grades in public schools, and we're working with a group called Healthy Futures, who's already has peer leaders in the schools, that is already doing education, has respect from the students, and we're hoping that that starts soon. And we thought we could join it, put it in the health classes with the health teachers, but apparently, most of the health teachers in the Lowell Public Schools and the grade schools have been cut. And so it's been challenging. We're working now with the physical ed teachers to start soon, a program where there's three classes, and, you know, I think everybody understands how hard it is to get off of opiates, and so really, the primary prevention focus should be on preventing the initiation of the abuse, and I think that's really where we need to focus.
That's good. It's good news to hear that.
John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also wanted to mention, Madam Counselor, that's a, that's a piece of the action that we need to address, is the school kids. I'm not sure, and I want to ask John here, whether or not, is UMass Lowell or Middlesex College, any of these kids including, included in this, in this?
So anything that happens within the city, so the university and the community college would be included. Anecdotally, it's not, it's not very often we have one where UMass Lowell is part of the facility. It may be, it may be an off-campus apartment, but how we kind of put all the UMass buildings in our facility, they all start with a UML, so we can track things easier between us and the university. And there's not all that many that are that UML space, whatever the name of it is. So they are included, but I don't, I don't think there's that many.
Okay. And so we need to start with the kids. I agree with you there. I think we need to start with the medical community as well. I've heard stories where, again, Madam Counselor, I don't know how many pills they gave you for your knee, but we hear stories where they're prescribed 30 days' worth of Oxycontin or, or whatever opiate that they need. Instead of three or four days for the pain, they give them 30 days' worth of the drug, which is a problem. But that being said, if you look at the average age of these overdoses, they're 34 for females and 40 for adults. So, I mean, for males. So these aren't kids that are overdosing. These are middle-aged to, you know, 35 and 40-year-olds that are the problem.
You know why? Because they didn't get the education when they were in the fourth grade. That's why we want to start there and stop it. As they get to be adults, you won't have any more adults, hopefully.
Has to be a comprehensive approach. I would agree with you.
That's what we're trying to do here. And I will tell you the truth here. I, I, I went to the doctor to have a follow-up here, and I said, about my prescription, about my medicine, and I could see the face drop, like, if she's thinking she's going to ask me for more, it's not happening. I could feel this is what he, but I wasn't asking that question. I was asking, the other, the other pill that you gave me, folic acid, could I stop that now? But he thought, when I started out, I was going to ask him for more, and I could see clearly, he was not going to do that. So I was happy to know that he would not have let me go on and on and on. He would have been right there stopping it. So you need doctors like that, that'll say, you know what, take a Tylenol, or take a stronger Tylenol, or whatever. You know what I'm saying? So he's a good man, so I wanted you to know that.
Thank you, Counselor. And before I give it to Counselor Melonazo, I'd just like to elaborate, because that's a great, a great point. You know, I've been on the Greater Lowell Health Alliance with John Chumley and John Kelly, you're there as well, for almost two years now, and we're representatives from nine different communities from Greater Lowell. We say month after month, meeting after meeting, about how it needs to be in the curriculum. It needs to be mandated in the curriculum. Now, what Counselor Mercy referred to, as their public speakers and occasional guests who have, whose family or themselves have had bouts, yes, they're sporadic. I went to one today at Middlesex Community College. A woman spoke, such an elegant speaker, told a story of her daughter who passed away at 23 years old, right from Arlington, a very affluent community. No one was there. These are sporadic, they're not mandated, they're, they're optional, if you will. These kids, I don't know what, what grade is proper, I'm no expert in education, but it does, needs to be mandated in the curriculum. I think we're past that stage, it needs to get done, and we need to stop talking about it and stop implementing it, because it's been, it's getting very repetitive, and it's, and it should be definitely required. I think we should, in this city, start leading the charge, I think. I really think it's tough, because we're being hit very hard. I understand it may not be popular with some, but this, this is an issue, and we can't ignore it, we have to talk about it, and we have to address it. So that's something I intend on doing in the form of motions in the coming weeks, engaging with school department officials. What can we do? This needs to happen sooner rather than later. And, you know, hopefully, we can get some momentum from there. So excellent point. Counselor Mercy, so with that being said, Counselor Melonazo, to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Really, my question's directed to Director Keegan, having to do with what Mr. Chumley said about the doctors prescribing, say, 30 pills when the patient may need three, maybe five. What outreach are we doing to the medical community, either through Lowell General Hospital, or I know there's a number of, not to pick on orthopedic doctors, but there's a number of practices within the city and the Greater Lowell area, just reaching out to?
Right, so most, most of the outreach to dentists, doctors, anyone who has prescribing ability, has been started at the state level through a thing called the Medication Monitoring Program. And initially, that was a non-mandatory system that wasn't, that only the doctors could access, and they said they didn't have time to access, where you would go online and, and see if the person you're prescribing an opiate to had been had been prescribed an opiate in the last few weeks. And so the Commonwealth is trying to tighten up all of the prescription monitoring program, things that the doctors and other prescribers are supposed to follow. So make it mandatory, make them, you know, have to look it up, have to register the person. They're putting pamphlets in every opiate that goes in, that's distributed in the pharmacies with warning signs. There's a lot of things that are being done. The governor has reached out to the medical schools to try to, there's really no prescription education in medical schools, there never has been. Medical schools or nursing schools, so he's reached out to them in terms of starting education about prescribing, about addiction, about using non-opiates whenever you can for pain. So a lot of that outreach to physicians has been done through that prescription monitoring initiative.
Do we know what the street value is of an opiate, of a pill? I know we're talking sometimes that a small dose of heroin would be $5 or $10. Do we know what these pills, because some kids might get a 30-bottle, you know, prescription, use five, and then, I hate to say it, go out and sell them. So do we know what the street value is?
You know, I think it's in the $40 range per pill, depending on exactly what you're talking about.
Okay.
Several different types of OxyContin, and then there's Vicodin and Percocets and different things. So it kind of depends then on the strength of it.
Okay.
But let me give you a little unfortunate sobering statistics about heroin. You know, I've been around a while, and I was in the drug unit here back in the mid-'80s. And at that time, a single dosage unit of heroin in the city of Lowell and the surrounding area was about $45 per dosage unit. Let's say approximately the same size, a tenth of a gram or so. And the purity level was pretty low, you know, 20 to 30 percent. That same approximate dosage unit today is about $6 a bag. And the priority is much higher, you know, it could be in the 70 percent plus, plus range. And that's not even considering now they add in the fentanyl. So we even recently, back a little while ago, we had some distributors in the community that were coming from neighboring communities that were giving it away on, free on Sundays. So you see the, you see the problem. And what I can tell you from a more, an intelligence perspective, dealing with the heroin and fentanyl issue, is what DEA tells us is all the heroin and fentanyl is coming up through Mexico. And they've basically taken over the distribution pipeline of heroin into the, into mostly the United States, certainly this, the Northeast Corada. And it's coming in from Mexico. Previously to a few months ago, most of that mix of fentanyl and heroin was occurring in Mexico, and then it would be transported up here. Just recently, I was in an intelligence briefing where they indicated now, we actually, and coincidentally, some of the task force officers from this department, my department was involved in this, and they actually made a find of fentanyl being mixed locally with heroin. So those are ominous signs. Clearly, you know, this battle continues, and it's going to be a long-term initiative here through a coordinated effort. And I think it involves, you know, our job is the deterrence and the prosecution and the apprehension of these individuals that are bringing this poison into our communities and making money off it. And I think we should be unrelenting in our pursuit of putting those people in jail and long-term incarceration, anybody that's dealing heroin in this community. And then, you know, we have to address it multifaceted. There has to certainly be a treatment. And the long-term solution here is education and prevention. That's a longer, much more difficult initiative in some respects. But hopefully, we can make progress in that regard, because that's ultimately, we'd love to not have the issue, not have the demand, so.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Samaras, anything to add?
Thank you, Chairman Palangia. Chief Taylor, I think, I know you're more than well aware, a number of years ago, we had the drug program with the police department, then Officer Dolan, Golden, people like that. And we had, I believe there were at least three offices that were assigned throughout the school department, elementary, middle school, and high school. And I found those programs very, very successful. I mean, literally what you did, in the elementary, they developed an army of youngsters that were against, you know, drugs. And they'd do the, have contests and different things like that. But they really were believing in it, and they were going home, talking about believing in it. And it strengthened in the middle school. And they changed their program at each level to the high school, where in the high school, we had many students come into the offices saying, "My friend so-and-so is going down the right, wrong road, can you help?" And so I'm a strong advocate of educational programs. Do you think you can review those programs of the past? It's a different, the opiate is a different type of drug problem, I realize that. But to look at the costs and look at the possibility of bringing a program like that back? Because I know we can put it in our curriculum, but it's not going to have the same effect on the children as these officers who did a wonderful job going into the school, really, in a sense, revving up the students, speaking with them, speaking with the teachers. I mean, it became a citywide program, they had contests, they had something going every day. But we did see a precipitous drop in drugs at the high school. I think you're aware.
Yes.
Where we pulled some raids in the high school, where we brought the dogs in and things like that. And Lowell High School, as big as it was, was in a much better place than a lot of the suburban high schools were. So, I mean, it's, I'd like to see if you could come up with an idea to present to this council so we could have something to look at.
Sure.
What the cost would be, because ultimately, that's what we're going to have to do.
You know, I think that's a great idea, and I personally think a comprehensive approach to it, which would include the school nurses and the, and the school department. So we kind of, you know, team approach, so to speak, with the police officers. Because we have a pretty good component of police officers, but the key is to, you know, get everybody on the same page, so we do it, you know.
I think you're right. I mean, I was talking about, they were mainly dealing with marijuana and things like that.
Right.
A much different problem.
That's right.
But the opiate is another type of problem, so you do require the nurse to be available.
Absolutely.
Teachers to be knowledgeable, child's not just taking an aspirin in school or something like that.
Right. And I did hear recently with the school department, trying to do mandated outreach to the parents. Because last year, I don't know if people remember, but we did a outreach where we had a community forum, I think it was in the spring of last year, to talk about opiate abuse. And quite candidly, it was focused to the school department, and we publicized it, and we, you know, put it out on social media. We didn't get great attendance, quite candidly, it was kind of disappointing. But one way that we may be able to strategize to get better attendance, to get more buy-in from the parents, is to mandate if you're going to potentially work, if you're going to potentially have a student in some kind of after-school activity, whether it's sports or whatever it might be, that see if we can try and rope the parents in for a mandatory meeting at the beginning to go over some of these issues. Because as we know, there's a connection between sports-related injuries, that kids get some kind of opiate, either legally or illegally. And then some, we all know some tragic examples, I know personally, some tragic examples that have led to students being, you know, addicted, so.
And some of the examples that I could cite also were the type that said, "I could control it."
Yeah.
"This is recreational."
Right.
"I'm not going to fall to that." And they really have little understanding about it.
Yeah, we will do that, Counselor. I'll reach out to the school department.
Thank you very much.
Joanne and I, we can have a meeting.
Thank you, Counselor, great input. Now, I'd like to open up to the public. Anybody like to speak on this matter? What do you know, state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, my name is Kim Hampson, and I reside at 27 Whitney Road in Shirley, Mass. I do have very strong ties here in the city. My parents still live here, and both my children. I'll just give you a very quick background. My son is 25 years old, and he is six months recovering from heroin addiction. Unbeknownst to me, back in high school, when he got injured in sports, took him to the doctors, had a fractured this, fractured that, broken this, broken that. Always gave him the Percocets because he needed the pain. As a mother, I just handed him the pills, never thought anything of it, gave it to him every four hours. Didn't think he had an addiction issue then. I guess I didn't really clearly open my eyes to the issue, because I was administering the pills every four hours. Unbeknownst to me, he was still getting them from everywhere else. He got a scholarship off to college. He played ball. At the end of his freshman year, he got injured. He was at Norwich University. Up there, they kept administering OxyContin to him, Percocets. Every 30-day, a 30-day supply would be gone, in '15, they would just give him more. This went on the end of his freshman year, beginning of his sophomore year. The injury relapsed, they did the same thing. I saw the grades plummet, I saw everything else, I pulled him out. Brought him home, thought that was the end of it. He was 19 at the time. He went, enrolled himself back in college, community college. He got himself a full-time job. He was working full-time, he had a child, life was good. I thought life was good for him. Again, my blinders were up. I didn't see the signs that I should have been looking for, because I wasn't educated on what signs I should be looking for with opiate addictions. We're all taught what signs to look for for smoking marijuana, because never in my life did I ever think that this opiate crisis would hit my family, hit me, hit my son. So I didn't see those signs, I wasn't looking for them. April of 2014, he lost his job. Kind of figured something was up, because he'd never had any money. You know, he worked very, he worked a very good job, was making very good money, never had any. I was paying his bills, I was paying his child support, couldn't figure out what was going on. He lost his apartment, he moved back home. When he was back home with me, I'm a mother, I go snooping through his stuff, because that's what mothers do. And I found all kinds of paraphernalia, which then the flags went up. I confronted him, he admitted that he had a Percocet problem. He was moved on from taking the pills to smoking the pills. I told him he had two choices, well, one actually, rehab, that was it. He called the Blue Cross and Blue Shield number, he was on a plane that next day. It was Saturday night, Sunday morning, I put him on a plane. He was on in Florida for 30 days. I was like, phew, I could breathe, I was good, he was getting the treatment he needed. He went away for 30 days, he came home. I saw a huge change in him, life was going back to where he was, he was working out, he was talking again, he was eating, he looked healthy, life was good. Well, unbeknownst to me, people in Florida at the drug rehab told him, "If you like the Percocet, huh, you should really try the heroin hike. It's even better, and cheaper." So that's what he moved on to at the end of 2014, because we're in '15. January 2000, or December of 2014, I lost a cousin to heroin. January, two weeks later, my son told me he had a heroin addiction. I went absolutely crazy. He brought me to HDK, which is located right here in Lowell, and it was, it's a clinic, which he was getting outpatient help for. He went to them, he wanted to get on the Suboxone. I thought, okay, we're on the right path, he's doing the right, this was his decision, his choice, he knows what he needs to do. Suboxone didn't work, he had a really bad relapse in April. We had him sectioned. Didn't bail him out of jail that night, he got arrested, he had an incident, he got arrested, we didn't bail him out. Went to court the next day, I had him sectioned. He went away down to Bridgewater State. He was there for 30 days. When he came out, he had stipulations, and he's been obeying by them ever since. Got the VivaTrol shot, he's going to his drug counselor, he's going to his peer officer, he's doing his OCC, he's doing everything. Knock on wood, we're six months clean. I have had my eyes opened wide to this whole heroin, opiate epidemic. I could tell you, I'm back here answering all your questions that you guys have been asking, because one person should not know what I know. And it's sad that I have to learn this. But he is on the road to recovery. He is, I hope and I pray that he's going to stay sober, but it's a very tough addiction. My questions to all of you, which brings me here this evening, because he still does reside in Lowell. This is a huge epidemic and a huge problem. And I see him and so many of his friends that are hooked because they got injured in sports, pills got too expensive, they moved on to heroin. What can we do as a city, as a town, as the community, to help these kids stay on the right path? We have no programs out there. We are thankful that our insurance pays for everything. I have not had to pay a dime, I shouldn't say that. We have EFA and things like that, but 90 percent of it has been covered through Blue Cross and Blue Shield. So I'm thankful for that. But there are a lot of people out there that can't. They don't have insurance, and, you know, they need the help. I listened to the Gloucester Chief of Police with his Angel Program. I'm not sure if any of you have heard of that. It is an awesome program that he developed, and they have had, I think, 150, excuse me, heroin addicts come in and get help. And so far to date, he's had great progress with that. Is there something the city that we could do here in the city to maybe mimic that program? Or try to make these individuals that have these addictions feel less of, what's the word I'm looking for? Less of a criminal? Because my son's biggest thing is he's shamed, he's shamed right now. He's, he's on the road to recovery, but he is completely shamed of his family and his friends, because he went down a path that is kind of shameable. It's humiliating. He never thought he'd be there. So I think if we take the stigma out of it, and I don't want to say decriminalize it, because there are a lot of criminals out there that, you know, or heroin leads to criminal acts, but I think that something needs to be done. I think we need to look at programs that you can say to the addicts, you know, "Come into the police department if you're done." Because addicts know when they're done, but they have nowhere to turn. So if you hit your rock bottom and you want to turn yourself in and you want to go get help, they have no safe haven here in Lowell. And they can't get down to Gloucester. But I, the Chief of Police in Gloucester has had many phone calls where he has come picked people up and brought them down to the program, because they're ready to do that. I really think that it's time, as the city council, as the Chief of Police, the fire, that we as a community try to be in together to stop helping the addicts with their addiction and stop shaming them.
Beautiful. Thank you for sharing that story.
Amazing. Thank you very much, Kim. But knowing the good character of you and your family, we have no doubt there'll be no shortage of caring and support. We wish you the very best, in all honesty. And please keep, there's nothing you did wrong. You sound like the woman today who's, God forbid, lost her daughter, you sound exact same story. It's nothing you did wrong, I want you to know that. So please keep, please. Thank you for sharing that with us. So Chief, to you, you know, you know, there has been a lot of talk to her point about the Angel Program in Gloucester. It has gotten a lot of publicity, even national recognition. And the theory was from the get-go that the bottleneck, yeah, if I, an addict comes in, I need, I'm ready, you know, I want to. But that's where the bottleneck was at the same time, there was nowhere to put them. So what do you know about this program, how much it's coming to fruition? And again, the possibility of Lowell adopting something similar? So please.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor. We have just preliminarily looked at that, and, you know, there's a couple of problems with it. But let me say at the outset that certainly, everybody understands, I completely understand. And I can tell you that my office is, you know, very much thinking along the lines of getting people treatment. So we do that all the time. We partner with people that are much more expert in trying to treat these individuals than we are. Lowell House, for example, we partner with them on many of our grant applications to try and find them some additional funding. Because what, if you talk to Bill Gahr at Lowell House, he will tell you that it's one thing to ship somebody out to a short-term, you know, treatment, but really, what they need is long-term follow-up. And one of the areas that has been the most successful is the drug court. Because they get that, as you indicated, with your son, he needs kind of that, you know, constant supervision, what he'd get back from Bridgewater, to hold, have somebody hold their feet to the fire. And that, I think the drug court has been very successful, I think you probably agree with that, Counselor Rourke, that that's a really successful mechanism, and they're standing up drug courts all across this Commonwealth to try and get people, once they come to the realization, however they get there, that they need help, especially if they've got some criminal charges, to get them into a position where they can get some treatment and some follow-up. You know, we have looked at that, there's some legal impediments to that that still are, you know, trying to be worked out in Gloucester. There's a big rift between the local police chief and the district attorney over the legality of that. And so it was predicated around the idea that drug dealers, drug addicts could come in and turn in their drugs, and then they'd go get treatment. You know, the reality is, people don't turn in their drugs and get treatment. They'll get treatment, but typically, the reality of the situation is, that the last I heard, nobody actually turned in their drugs first. So the idea is to get them treatment and find them beds and get them places to go. One of the initiatives that we've done, we've assigned, many of you know Officer Gano, Kevin Gano's a great person, tremendous worker in the area, the homeless people and advocating for those people. And he's been assigned recently. And he's been assigned recently, over the past several months, to work with the homeless people in the downtown area around some of the service providers, to try and reach out for them, find out who they are, and see if we can, you know, find them opportunities to get some treatment. So absolutely, treatment's necessary, we do everything we can, we work with the health department and many other agencies to see if we can get them. Nobody comes into a police department looking for help that we don't help, you know. We may not call it the Angel Program, but we don't, we don't turn people away. We try and facilitate as much as we reasonably can, trying to point them in the right direction to get some kind of treatment.
Now, has there been a number of individuals, as of late, coming in, seeking help or looking for services?
You know, council, I don't know, now, I know in Gloucester, they were able to, you know, gather the public relations, the, you know, the marketing, so if you speak component of that, and get a lot of national people to give them free beds. I think part of the issue may be in this community. Gloucester's a much, much smaller community than, than certainly Lowell is, you know. So I think the scale of the problem might be a little bit more problematic for us. But, you know, I think what we would advocate to do is work with the existing service providers around Lowell. Like I said, Lowell House is a great partner, the health department has some additional resources that we can point people in the right direction.
Well, chief, I understand your sentiment, you know, there might be legal issues and this being a larger community, but I think it's still worth investigating to whatever level we can help. Maybe if you could collaborate with the local, I mean, we can only use your resources at your disposal, I understand, but maybe it's worthwhile looking into go-to points for these individuals who seek counseling, that, you know, at least do what we can, rather than, and I know you would never shut the door anybody walks in.
No, absolutely.
I understand that, that's not, that's not an issue, but I still think it's worthwhile investigating to some level, what can we do? Because I think Gloucester, it's a good example, it has worked to some degree, and people have rallied. Councilor Mercier mentioned the Megan House.
Right.
And when that hit the media in the Boston stations, we received tens of thousands in donations from anonymous people.
Right.
So people are astute to this and step forward, and I think that might.
Right.
Be part of the solution as well. But I still think it's some grief, you could collaborate locally and see what the police department can do on top of, again, what you're already.
Okay, we can do that.
We do appreciate your efforts, what you're doing, chief.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the public would like to chime in? Okay, thank you. Any other, anybody from the audience, anything to add on this, or? Any board members, committee? Well.
Thank you.
Councilor Mercier?
Do we have Narcan in, at Lowell High School, in the nurses?
Yeah, so all of the school nurses in the Lowell public schools have been trained on the use of Narcan.
Oh, good.
The day before school started this year. And so it's available, not just for students in all of the public schools, but I think you'd be surprised at how many people stop at fire departments and school buildings when they're seeking help.
Yes.
Or go to a school when, when they're in need of something. And so the school nurses have been trained and have it available to them.
And so wouldn't it be nice if the next time, or sometime in the future, when we met, and instead of just giving a report like you did, which was very thorough and very interesting, that part of the report would say, "We have 200 people that are six months sober off of drugs." Wouldn't that be a remarkable turnaround, instead of saying 119 people saved by Narcan? But wouldn't it be nice if we had statistics on people turning their life around, because now they're three months drug-free, or two months sober? I think that, that would be, that would be the light at the end of the tunnel, I would say. Too bad, maybe that's our goal, that we could see that statistic.
Councilor Rourke?
Thank you, Chairman. And just to wrap up, you know, with Councilor Mercier and I, you know, our places of employment, we deal with this, you know, every day. And to be on the chief's point, if someone comes to Councilor Mercier and myself, you know, whether it's the sheriff's office or the courthouse, if they came to ask them for help, they would get it. You know, we've referred people to Bill Gahr multiple times, and Bill has not turned one person down regardless of money, insurance, or whatnot. So I think a lot, and again, I know the council could speak on this, when a person's ready for help, you know, especially in Lowell, the help is there, but most of the time, the problem is, you're getting that person to come to us and ask for the help. A lot of times, they have criminal charges hanging over their head, which kind of pushes them in that, in that direction, and that does help, and I'm very happy to hear your insistence, ma'am. But again, if there's someone out there that doesn't want the help, I mean, please come see us, because there are avenues out there for help, so, you know, that's all I'll say.
No, that's a great point, council. I think Lowell is doing more than we're getting recognized for. I mean, we're not be a nationally recognized program like Gloucester is, but we're essentially doing the same thing. Yes, Kim?
Sorry, I'm trying to bite my tongue back here, me and my mother. I understand that there are a ton of programs out there in the city, but it's not publicized. Me as a mother, didn't know that. Didn't know that, I mean, I know I can call any of you guys, I know I can call, I know who my connections are in the city, and I know what I can do. I have a neighbor whose son is desperate. She doesn't know where to turn. It's not publicized for the parents to know, you know what, you can call this group, you can call Rita, you can call Cora, you can call, I have this, thank you. I belong to Learn to Cope here in the city, so I have all this. But, so it's not really publicized out there to the parents that are desperately seeking help. You know, they, there are a lot of, this drug has hit from one spectrum to the other. It's, so it's not just low income, it's everywhere. So there are a lot of people that just don't know where to go to get this, where to start. And I don't think that's publicized anywhere. Chief?
Here's the.
It's, people don't realize that they can just walk right into the police department.
Here's the sun reporter, he's going to publicize it, aren't you?
So I do think that one, the drugfreegreatolol.org tries to list all current resources.
That's right.
And that's a great resource. We get hundreds of hits every month to that, so you know that people are looking for services, and they do try to update that regularly. You're right, there's, you know.
People just don't know where to turn. I, I look at the LowellSun.com every day. Like I said, I still have a lot of ties here in the city, so I still try to stay involved with as much as I can. But it's not, you know, there's a thing up there that says "The Opiate Crisis," and you can click on that. So, you know, I think if there was more information to be had out there, to know that, you know, that, you know, the programs that we have in the school, leave the flyers out there with all the information, so that maybe one kid will just take it home and stick it in his backpack and find, his mother can find it. You know, there's, it's just not publicized enough for everybody to know that it's there. And just coming from a mother who's going through this and has seen not just my son, but other individuals, we have nowhere to turn. When I first found out my son was an addict, I didn't know where to turn. I was just, first off, I was so dumbfounded, I didn't know what to do, but then, you know, of course I called my mother, and we don't know where to turn, we don't know what to do, you know, because this has never hit our family before. So there was no, you know, could I call the police department? I could have called numerous friends of mine down there, and they'd be like, "Well, you know what, he's an addict." That's kind of my first response I got from a lot of my friends, chiefs at our police offices. "He's an addict, ship him away."
Well, one of the.
That didn't help me.
One, one resource that I think is a really valuable one is, every community has a local health department or a health board, and that very often is a very good clearinghouse to get additional information. Because I know in our community, we have a opiate task force that meets on a monthly basis, and it's really run by the local consortium of the local health departments, that, you know, that's kind of their role, they get all that information, and anybody in a community, whether it's, I think you said you live in Shirley now?
I live in Shirley, yes.
Right. So if the, if the person that you're talking about lives in Shirley, I'm sure that if they.
He lives in Lowell.
Oh, lives in Lowell, okay. So, I mean, they can contact the Lowell Health Department.
Yep.
And I know, you know, we have, they have educators that can help, and certainly the police department, too, the advantage we have is where they're 24/7, so.
Right, right. And like I said, we've, unfortunately, I should say fortunately, we are pretty connected in the city, and we know who we can contact to find these issues. And at first, it was a little, don't want to make that phone call, because it was a little embarrassing, but now it's like, you know what, I preach to everybody. I'll tell anybody my story, if I can help that next person. And I would love to be able to say to all the other parents that I know, look at, there is, this website you can go to, there is, you know, go down to the police station, they have pamphlets in the hallway, come down to City Hall, all the information is there. I'm now becoming an advocate to, I'll just tell anybody who needs to hear this story, what has to happen to stop this, these children from dying and going down a wrong road. But I think the more we can get it out there, whether it be in schools, or, you know, just on the street, I don't know, go out with a megaphone and scream. I don't, I don't know how to get to people, and I guess that's, you know, the other thing is, I guess I look to you guys as, you know, the leaders of the city, as to how do we get this message out there to all the homes, to say, "There are help, there is help for your children. This is all you need to do." I guess that's another.
Absolutely. I mean, the biggest thing, the best thing about all this publicity is removing the stigma, and that, you know, that, that's what we can do. This is a health issue.
Correct.
This is an addiction issue, this is a health issue, and there's no one that should be ashamed of it. And that's the, that's, we need to start.
Right. And like I said, whatever I can do as a public servant to scream out there, I will, but I guess one of the things I'm looking for all the leaders in here is to, to get the public, help, help me get the public message out there, or what we can do, how we can get it out there, where we can go with it.
Well, Kim, you started that today, we're televised, so it's not just that.
Jeez.
It's not that you.
I didn't know that.
It's not that you're just telling us, you're telling the public out there, so you're doing your job, thank you.
And the Lowell Sun is here as well, and thank you, Grant, to yourself, and Todd Feathers has been reporting this issue, and we appreciate your outreach on this issue. You report quarterly on this, on this issue, and it's greatly appreciated, our community appreciates it very much. But in closing, you know, I think we've learned here what we can do as a city, as city leaders, you know, this is our duty to, and I think we, it begins with the respective police and fire chiefs to begin outreach in the classrooms. I think that goes a long way when an officer and a fire, a fire department official goes in the classroom and talks to kids, I think that goes a long, long way. There's not enough of that. I mean, not something that's optional, at the end of the day, I mean, right in the classroom, in the trenches, talking to these kids, I think goes a long way, and that's something that we can start fairly at a, in a short amount of time. Education in the classroom, I think, needs to begin sooner rather than later. We are the city leaders, and it starts with us, and that's something I feel needs to be done sooner rather than later. And so I, and my fellow colleagues are going to be discussing that in the very near future as well. But, chief, to you, it seems that, what's, in my opinion, public enemy number one in the street right now is the heroin dealer on the street, peddling heroin for $7, $8 a hit. That's very lethal, and you mentioned yourself, and I heard the same thing, I speak to many police officers on the street downtown above, about these free Sundays where dealers are giving away heroin to get you hooked. That cannot be tolerated. And it seems like, you know, I've never been in law enforcement, but the strategy was always to leave the lower-level drug dealer alone, to get the big guy, to get the big fish, so to speak. But I think in this fight, it begins with a clean sweep of this low-level drug dealer on the street. And I know, chief, you only have so many resources, if you can communicate to us to begin, from what I understand, they're fairly arrogant in their bidding, not that it's easy, but these individuals need to be taken off the street. It's destroying our communities, there's no two ways about it. And, and, you know, you're the expert, maybe you, and you can maybe brief this council in the coming weeks on how to go about that. And also, as Kim was stating, you know, some kind of better outreach, or a walk-in program for referrals to individuals that come in looking for help, you could have referral programs or whatnot. And I know, like I said earlier, Gloucester's getting all the publicity, but we're doing as much, if not more. We really are, the city of Lowell is a leader in this fight, and we will continue to be through our leaders such as Representative Golden, Nangle, and Ratty Mum, who have delivered hundreds of thousands of dollars for outreach on this fight. And they're our leaders, and we need their help as well.